Daniel B. Darrow.
We're opening the February 1st, 2023 Select Board Meeting at 6:00 P. M. Amendments to the agenda. I have just two updates I'd like to do at the very end. One is on the Assessor and one is on East Hill Property. So approval of the minutes of January 18th, 2023, I have a motion to approve. I'll make a note here. For a second?
I'll second it.
Are there any questions, corrections, deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Okay, really. Comments from the community? Do you have any community members?
No results.
Hold on, correspondence then. So we received notice that cotton portable toilets is again increasing their monthly rental fee to $190 a month.
Do you think that the morgues are shopping around? Is that a pretty big deal? And we're looking to add? Right for the rail trail.
Now that we've finished our budget, they've sent the letter. Um, it wouldn't hurt to call around and find out how much. They have been lowest around for a while, but that might change.
So I'm going to listen.
We have the approval of the county budget and our assessment, $16,776. Didn't that go down?
It didn't, yeah.
Yeah, but it went down. Yeah, so that.
Because of population, yeah.
And we received an invoice from Black Dirt. One of our totes was contaminated. So they charged just $20 for that.
Yeah.
So are people putting plastic in there? Is that what's happening?
I don't. I think that, yeah, they're taking plastic bags full of.
Oh.
They don't bag and everything goes in. And that is, you know, it's a monitoring issue. It's those things sit right next to where Sylvia's standing.
And does the... Does either the Solid Base District or Black Dirt Farms sell these gallon containers where people can store their stuff at home? I know that we've sold recycling buckets in the past, and I didn't know maybe.
I don't get it right now. You can find it out.
Comcast is...
That we took full advantage of this letter. Explain it in my word.
All right, so we received something from Comcast. And then the town hardware is... Just telling us that data file for rate increases.
For electric.
Does it say that it was approved? March 1st. It said the proposed retail rate schedule is to be effective on a service basis beginning March 1st, 2023. Everything's going up.
Yeah.
We have...
I'm finding out enough things now to bring it up to the question.
Right. Anyone else from the public on there? Let's move on to our project manager group's report.
A few things. There's a number of compliance forms we need to do in February. So we filed the street compliance form. The certificate of highway mileage has been recorded. The notice of intent for watershed management. I discovered that we had already, we had paid this. I didn't realize it actually did. And so the agreement was signed by Linda and she had paid it. That is gone. And the bridge and road weight restrictions were put into the system. These are all annual reports that have to go on February as usual month. I noticed that the Gulf Road Bridge was already removed from the weight restrictions. I'm not sure how that happened, but it did.
So what are the restrictions? Do we have the...
We have none.
Right.
But you still have to file.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So Comcast permit, a letter that Linda was referring to there was from Comcast Corporate. They have a division there that is specifically there to deal with municipalities. So we jumped on that right away. I got ahold of them. They got ahold of the subcontractor that did the work, Mr. Richard Volka, brother. I don't know what they said to him, but he was here the next morning to complete the permit. I did learn that there are no other plans for digging in Volca. Everything else they're going to be doing is going to be in Volca.
So what did they do in Volca?
They did. They came across Richard Volka Road and then they went down. Walnut Lane, correct.
You mean they came, where did they come across?
Well, there's a, there's a bright hat Walnut Lane. And so they came down off a pole. So they were running the line down a pole. They came down the pole, they crossed Richard Volka Road, and then down Walnut Lane. And so the violation was coming across the river. But it has been completed now, and Dylan has signed that. And it includes a map of the location. They did not have the GPS coordinates. And Dylan is going to state it, so we already know this. The concern here is that when we do annual vision, we run off, we're going to hit this thing. So... So I don't know if the board needs to sign up on this.
Does, I think normally, do we approve them? Is there a thing for us to approve?
There's not on this particular one. Usually for the, the ones I'm used to seeing are the driveway permits. You know, so we do sign off on it, but it has no combination.
So has anyone in the town signed off?
Uh, Dylan. Yes, Dylan.
And what about DigSafe? Are they required to let them know or?
I talked to him about DigSafe. And he indicated that, you know, DigSafe has a computer interface where they can go and look where lines are already. And he said he had done that. I asked him if he had posted with DigSafe, and he said they do that monthly.
They're trying to make that quick money. So Elmore got a plow truck stuck there.
Yeah.
In the ditch. So they did more than just ditch across. They ditched a big length along the north side. Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
And after the Elmore truck dropped in because it hadn't repacked. Right, it was loose.
Yeah, right. And then they put gravel over it, right?
Did they?
Yeah.
I noticed that.
What I understand they did was there was ledge on the north side. So they broke through the ledge and then laid cable there, then came across the road.
Yeah. I saw two places they trenched across. I don't know if they laid cable both, but they trenched across at two different locations.
Well.
Well, we'll have to inspect it with...
Yeah. And here's the, I mean, they did provide a map.
Yeah.
On...
Do you mind if I peek at it?
No, please.
So that is significantly included in the county books.
Right. Okay. Roundfield Spanish for the... It looks very good. No, Jason?
Yeah, it looks like it.
This is for the Champlin Oil Property. And we did have to go out and EPA paperwork, pages of EPA paperwork. And the UKA came back and approved the study. So at this point, LCPC is bidding, putting up bids for inspectors. And the next step will be to do a Phase 1 Roundfield Study. Ball field mowing. This is actually a question. I'm in the process of putting out a... An ad for mowing biz. Brad Blaisdell, his contract was up last year. He's interested in coming back. So I just wanted to, I know this came up some time ago when we were doing some site visits. But I'm curious about what the board thinks about continuing to mow the North Volca fields over there. I don't know that those fields are used at all.
They haven't been used in a couple of years, and I asked that same question a couple of years ago. I don't know who said it. The response I got was, we didn't continue to mow them, they'll just grow up. So I don't know how the board feels about that. Would it cost to have a brush hog once a year? Well, we have skipped brush hog for random dollars, about $700.
What are they charging us to mow?
It was...
Well, it's all...
It's all locked together.
Is that $700 a time or was it a thousand dollars a time?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, it'd be cheaper than to just have it brush hog once a year. Once every other year.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of my thought as well because it takes a long time to mow that piece of a field. It looks pretty, but...
Must be an acre and a half, I think, but yeah.
We really should, it's, I know it's not part of the question, but at some point when it's, the restoration is done, we should really, though, make sure that there is a way to access the property. But I, I agree, brush hogging it once a year. I think, I do think we should keep it open.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who knows?
I mean, every other year wouldn't hurt. At least it would get it before they get too large to brush.
So if we brush hog it and then somebody comes along and wants to use it as a ball field, can it be mowed at that point?
If you have it done in the fall, yes. Because they're going to brush hog it, and so it will be like maybe two to three inches. And to mow it down one inch shouldn't be that hard in the spring. It'll green up again.
Well, that was, that was my, I agree that I think that makes sense. George? Maybe, yeah. No? Okay. Right, alright.
Oh, yeah.
So do we need to make anything formal on this or just?
I think we just have to change with the bidding, the bidding, how it's starting.
And I think just the board, I think we, do we agree? We just agree to have it brush hogged in the fall until somebody else comes forward and wants to use it. We can revisit it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not, we don't get it to the point where it's not recoverable.
Right.
So brush hogging, keep our eye on it, we can recover it. Couple things with the transfer station helps the, we've been getting complaints from Sylvia that the... The textile bins have been overflowing. And as we started to look into that, two things came up. One is that Hopsie is no longer servicing Vermont, but there is another company that has taken it over. And all of the agreements are the same. They come up every Tuesday. And the, the driver has been reporting that he's never seen them fall ever since he's been picking them up. So now I got to figure out what's happening is that maybe people are packing their plastic bags too full and can't get them in the slot, and so they're leaving by the side. But something's happening there. Because we actually, Michelle requested we have a third bin because of the complaints. And they're happy to do that, but they said they're not cool. We'll figure out what's going on there. The problem with those bins is you can't see inside them. Really difficult to see inside.
How do they get this stuff up? I mean, is it a key that they open?
Yeah, there's a side door, yeah. Well, it's a specialized key that we can't get into. So that's on the radar. Also, I spent some time with the commissary station trying to help Sylvia understand how to manage the black dirt bins. And so I think he's getting it. We strap one, we strap one of them down and don't open it up unless the other one is completely full. And my thought is that we can go back to Black Dirt and say, don't pick them up unless they're full. So if you pick up a full one, but don't, don't pick up one and a half and then charge us for two. And that's what's happening right now. See if we can improve upon that. This transfer station gate has collapsed. And so we're going to put in, I called Bill Allen. He should have been up there today and welded it back up. Just some maintenance issues there. Couple things on tax sale, just for FYI. Two, two of the tax sale properties have applied to the housing application, which raises the, the ability to... Put them up for tax sale. And so is Damian Webb and Malcolm Manning, the two that are now. And we are getting no feedback at this point regarding whether they, where those applications stand. And so these things are just sitting in the vote. North Volca Road, as we talked about before, we put in a, a point here with requests to the state regarding North Volca Road. We got a response back today, or the other day, in which the chief engineer of Highway Division indicated that, I just say it really quickly, he, she addressed this to Dan Noyes and Senator Westman. And he says, however, I want to make sure you received a written response as well. In short, the state does not have the resources to take over town highways, and there's no, no clear process to do so. Unless the town highway is a Class 1, most town roads do not have the structure, capacity, or ability to meet highway state standards. And any, and the investment to make them such would be outside the realm of possibility. So I'm not at all surprised by this letter. I think this is the right first response.
I thought it was insulting.
It pretty is.
And I, I felt it was insulting because, you know, she named in that, is that the email where she says what resources we have? Like we are stupid, we don't know what resources.
Yeah.
And it's like a drop in the bucket. So I just...
Yeah.
We'll move on or whatever. There are other avenues.
And, and, yeah, I agree. And that's the point. I'm not surprised at this. I expected it to be the first, the first response. But we're going to move on from here and continue with the road study in the spring. The accident studying and... Put together, what I'd like to do is to put together some categories in which we can identify costs that are directly related to that road and continue to work on some. But this letter was pretty much go away, and that's...
So we, remember I reached out to Craftsbury and they're, they're very interested in conducting the same things we're managing. So we should meet so they can reach out and try to do stuff on their side. They tried. I was wondering, so it boils down at the very end, like they won't do anything. I'd like to know what we could do about no through traffic. Is that in ordinance? You know, with thimes, if, I mean, that's like the last, if we can't get any help, at least get those big groups up and...
Right, right.
But then that also means who's going to police it.
Right.
So there has to be a plan.
Right, yeah.
Even if the sheriff, our colleague with the sheriff, they'd be telling them, that's all we want them to do for two or three weeks so that people get the message.
Yeah. So, I mean, I agree. That's kind of a... Hopefully we can make some movement before they do something like that. It is... Okay. The, Linda gave me a contact at BLCP to see if we can take advantage of a funding opportunity for lighting. And there is an opportunity that is coming up, and the application is not available yet. But it's up to $5,000 in improvements or $4,000 mini grant. And it does include the opportunity to have a, an inspector to come at no charge and tell us what we can and can't do in terms of lighting for here to the town hall and the garage. And the last thing is we were visited today by the Vass Trail Group who are currently building, grooming on the rail trail. They're going to open up the bridge here long enough to do the dog sled race, which is coming up. After the dog sled, they're going to close it up again. So they postponed the opening until March sometime. But the more interesting conversation was regarding parking. And details that, you know, in Hardwood, in Johnson, elsewhere, where snowmobilers have access to the rail trail, they're filling up parking almost immediately. Apparently in Hardwood, I mean, even today, the parking lot was full for, for those going on rail trails.
Cars aren't parking now?
No, in Hardwood. But he's, but his feeling is that most people don't know that you can access the trail right here. And if they're from out of town or whatever, they wouldn't know that. But that will be public information in no time. And he said we should have an expectation of having heavier load of parking here with trailers, trucks with trailers in the wintertime. And so we should be thinking about signage. He thought there could very well be spill over around the school street. People start parking there. And so it's just kind of the heads up. In his experience, where people do know where access points are, they're filling up parking lots.
So other words, you kind of might want that expand the parking lot, other words?
Right. That's one option, yeah. And we do, I believe we do have an option, the lease land over there.
Here are the phone numbers of those people who ask about their...
Right.
Have really got a immediate path for them yet.
Sure. I know. It's really slow going, getting response from state workers.
Yeah. Sounds good for me.
Right, I, I think, thinking about parking this whole area needs with, especially if you do the cafe, then we really need to think about better parking.
Yeah. And good signage. We need to avoid people from parking in front of the garage or anywhere near the ground because that's where they see the trail and they park there. So in the weekends, last weekend, there was four or five trailers that parked right behind the garage.
So we have this wonderful ball field that's only used a few months in spring. You know, if the road crew cleared out the parking area there, they could just zip right on the rail trail where it crosses the road too. And we could designate that as the...
Roll this party.
Well, snowmobile. Over there.
That's a good thought.
And just leave this to people who are walking their dogs or something.
Yeah, so skiers are here now, Miami. It's a good idea to separate the two.
But there's a lot of space there.
Yeah. As long as it doesn't become a mud bed, you can chew it out of it.
Well, I don't think they'd be out when it's muddy. They ruin their machines. They're out now because they're excited, but they haven't been out all winter.
Right.
Thing is, without snow, it burns up the tracks.
Right. You want to talk to them, to the highway crew and see what they think about?
Yeah.
You know, then it would be a matter of signage.
Those do.
Any other questions for Kurt? Thank you. So we're going to open up the public comment period way on, way on future ARCA expenses. Can you put the thing I gave you up there? My seniors and it tells you the total and it tells you what we've already expended or spent. It tells you what you have left. The thirty, no. Thirty, three hundred fourteen.
Yeah.
So we need to see what you mean. Parking fifty-three thousand dollars. What if I, I'm my senior?
Okay, we'll go through it as we know, okay? Do we have anyone else on? On?
Brand new is on. And then off, and then on, and then off.
Okay, I did an updated for collection of what we've committed or spent so far on ARCA ARCA funds effective today. So the board committed thirty thousand plus for E nine one one signs for the whole town and posts for emergency. For had complaints with people doing wheels on wheels, having real difficulty finding people. We are, we've committed sixty-five Morgan dollars for an engineering study in the schoolhouse to see if it's viable for putting a cafe in there and a museum. We've committed fifty-two thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars to the Northeast Kingdom Broadband. That, Crasberry brought that to us. They're doing Crasberry invested money in doing this spur. And if we, and it would come to our line up on Town Hill. And if we were be willing to commit to this amount of money, they would bring it down just past the East Hill turn and Manly Road. I don't have the map with me today.
East Hill turn on the Crasberry side?
Yes. It would come down from Town Hill on the Crasberry side?
Crasberry would?
Well, the Northeast Kingdom Broadband. But Crasberry has designated money for them to build the spur into Crasberry, which they weren't going to do. And we could connect on a little bit with our money.
So what's a little bit?
Fifty-two thousand nine hundred seventy.
What's the, what's the distance?
Something like ten miles.
No. On in Morgan? It wouldn't be much past Manly. It'd be all the way down Manly Road.
I'm betting you know which one's Manly?
Huh?
Which one's Manly?
Uh, the one by the cemetery.
From Town Hill?
Yeah. It's only Town Hill. It would come Town, Town Hill to about, a little past Manly Road. It would go all the way down Manly Road and it would do like seven houses on the East Hill where it connects to Town Hill.
So if I understood you correctly, that's very few homes.
It's forty-two.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and a subset of those have been identified as high need. So that, the way they're defining high need is they're either kids that are in school or people that have telehealth requirements. So it was a concentrated area where that, that need was realized.
So I think you want to go through the whole thing, but I'd like to speak to Bravion.
So we committed twenty-five thousand to purchase land that's going to be our community forest. We've been working on our website and website maintenance, bringing it up to speed, putting more things on the website. Which is still in progress. We spent thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars on our hybrid meetings. The technology and so forth to be able to do these meetings. We agreed, we, so that's how much we've spent on those two. We've agreed to commit four thousand to put our surveys online on the website. We've spent twelve thousand three hundred and eight dollars on building improvements, which was some lighting in the town garage, painting the town garage, the town hall on the exterior. And this thirty thousand dollars is just a guessimate, guesstimate possible. We're asking the voters whether they would approve our purchasing the Champlain Oil property, you know, the big parking lot, half the parking lot, probably fifteen in the village.
Okay, my name is Marcy Young, I live in East Hill. And if we've committed fifty-two thousand to help forty-two households, wouldn't it be great if we use some of this balance to connect even more?
Well, the trouble is we need somebody willing to connect.
What does that mean?
They.
Well, the town.
They have their, they have their schedule, their areas already mapped out. So it has to be within the Northeast Kingdom's actual development plans.
Or the oil fiber. We, we, we belong to two communication districts because we wanted to see who could get here first. So we have representatives on two of these districts that are working on bringing fiber to towns.
So maybe there's already a plan and we just need to know what the plan is and.
We do know the plan.
I think a bunch of places, it's like a couple of years on, a bunch of places in town.
At least five years.
Five years, yeah.
Couple two or a couple five.
Five.
Could be five, could be ten. People really don't know.
So money is not a problem?
No, it's, it's probably somebody to do that.
Okay.
Now, I do know that the oil fiber I just read has purchased the fiber for a hundred and twenty-five miles. I do not know what their plan is. We did see a presentation with Northeast Kingdom Broadband and we, we did see what their plan was. Woke seemed to be dwindling nowhere as usual.
Yeah, I think that the, you know, the issue is that this is a, a multi-million dollar debt that, that is being financed by the state against federal money. But unfortunately, it demands that we're way behind on infrastructure. So to build out the infrastructure to bring broadband to rural areas in Vermont is literally a five-year plan, five-year-plus plan. And that is the, and it's, so it's not really a money issue. Now, the, one of the areas where the Northeast Kingdom Utility District had focused on is Crasberry because they could build a hub there. And they're in the process of doing that. And once that hub is in, then there's an opportunity to build a spur that comes up close to the Woke line. So the, the proposition was, hey, we're going to be there. You know, if you want to speed things up for those folks that live in that area, here, here's, here's an opportunity. And it's a, it was a fifty-two thousand dollar opportunity to open that up and at least get some service in town, something.
Well, it sounds like you need neither advocacy nor money, so we just need patience.
Yeah.
And this fifty-two thousand also was a match, a match. If we signed up by a certain date, then the state, somebody is going to match dollar for dollar. So it's actually, you know, a hundred and four thousand dollar project, we'll hit the big fifty-two.
So the other thing that came to talk, talk about was a guardrail on East Hill. And maybe somebody's got that on their radar too. And I should just ask what the prognosis is for that before I say let's spend money, if you got it already on the plan.
So guardrails, there's, there's a number of guardrail issues. North Woke Road has, I know that there's some on East Hill as well. The guardrails kind of fell fell to the production chain and they become very, very expensive. Now, we have prioritized them and want to get together with guardrail providers this winter so that we can get them in on the spring. We're, we're a good two years late in getting guardrail repairs done. Where is it on East Hill that you're looking?
So there's now a berm there above the solar panels. But above the berm is, are just a, a spot that's not good. And, you know, I, I can list you all the people that have either almost gone over or have gone over.
Okay, is it, is there?
One of the shells.
Yes. Yes.
One of the shells.
There's never, there's never been a guardrail there to my knowledge.
Oh.
There's six days and there's never been a guardrail.
Oh, okay, okay.
But
Never.
You have a curiousness of it and I had a bad experience this winter already. I chose to go on the inside and not test the outside. So I don't know if the berm is effective enough to keep a car from going over. But just because the berm's there, I'm not positive that, that's all the things there. But if it bums out, there's nothing.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, we can, you know, get the road crew to come and discuss that and, yeah.
We put extra money in our budget if it passes. Our highway budget for, I, I didn't even know it needed to go to the ARCA money, that it would be just general convenience.
Yeah, we bumped up the guardrail budget line item by thirty percent because they're going to so much in price and because it's a very competitive market, we get our hands on those things. So, yeah, guardrails are important and we're behind in them. And the, the thing is, I want to, you said the shells?
Yes.
Oh, right there. Okay. Oh, yeah.
It's very dangerous. I mean, the Alens have three families that have gone over. About the clock. The pocket. It's sorry. And one time I called you and you popped me off so I could get up now. So I want to say thank you. And I'm going to say goodnight because I think at home, but I assume town reports are up front?
No, they're, they're printed.
They're printed, yeah.
And is there going to be an, in, is it hybrid or what is it going to be for this year for the town? Is normal?
Normal. But our town officers are voting on Rice County Power. So if you want to, you can vote there or ask for an absentee member. I think Dolan is going to zoom it, but it won't be interactive. Like if someone wants to watch it, they can watch it, but they can't participate.
That's a mark who will like that.
Um, she's stuck at home.
I would say thanks for all your hard work and all these meetings that you put your time in on.
Right. So if you look on the state. Okay, if you follow up on the state website, Lafayette is one of the state contracts and guardrails. And you should be able to get the state house. It just came across that for E nine one one signs.
As far as these signs go, are we, this thirty thousand is not included? Installation?
No. We had a quote there. And it might even not be enough. I don't know. I did, I did call Works Day last week, called them on one and and they were supposed to be getting me an estimate. Now, we wanted seven foot hose. They only sell six and eighty. I think eight is too large for you. Yes.
I can't believe we can't get seven foot.
Well, they did.
Oh, true. But it don't work. Is that a seven feet, wasn't it? And it was three feet down. They have less than a inch right there.
Okay, not making much progress with the public now of funds.
I had a comment though, as I would like to see funds allocated to the town office for you know, fixing things up maybe, you know, I think it's nice that this boardroom was painted. But I think carpet would be good and some funds kind of dedicated to emergency management, which seems to be like the ugly stretch back though, which you know, it doesn't get much attention. And just thinking about into the future since town office is where folks would come in a crisis or emergency. That, you know, if we had better you know, like furniture, tables, chairs. I don't see that tax dollars would ever be spent on that. And so if we could do an upgrade using the ARCA funds, I think that would be a long-lasting improvement and would be beneficial since this is a gathering place for the town and committees and other groups.
Not noted?
What is that?
So noted?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it is, I think it is deliberately dated.
That and if you ever do hear back, you hear back from the state of that possibility over there. Maybe you, maybe some of it could be used for whatever materials are needed. You have to build upon. Just if you ever did get a parking lot over there, materials to build it up.
Well, I think it has to be, there's only, you have to be, it's pretty clear.
Clear again. Clear again. But you have, you, it shouldn't, you have to raise it because you can't. Go down.
Yeah. Well, because it's a road.
Yeah.
The other problem is drainage.
Yes, yes. That is a problem.
So a lot of that side of drains.
It's there, and it drains over under the road. And I think it's a good point is that we should allocate some money for the other part of the drainage, and we can lease it for free, but we're gonna have to build this out.
And if, and whoever said it was in, it would benefit other.
Oh, yeah.
Are my suggestions correct? No?
I think we should just fix it up, it's, it's, you gotta have, gotta do this.
But for anything else, um, besides that, do you have any ideas, like, you?
That's my one that I bring up all the time, I want a second monitor.
Post plan?
No, a second monitor, side by side, up here. Have your document over here of the people.
So I was, uh, it dawned on me when I was putting this together that, um, we can't spend the ARPA money via the reason?
Explanator.
Explanator? Because we're not allowed to pay off debt on it. So I'm gonna have to redo that, um.
Sure.
And while we can't redo the budget, that's too late, um, this thing I gave you about the payments. So I was trying to think of a, a way around it. Um. First, putting together the, um, list of what our portion is on a bunch of grants, schools, street grid, we kind of know some of it, um, um, you know. One, you know, we would use that money from the capital fund, maybe use that from ARPA money and use, um, money from the capital fund to make those payments, I don't know. It's, so, I'm gonna have to sit in forty-four. Because we've taken eighteen thousand a year on the SCAN bill for that, and you can't use it, you can't use it for reduction of debt, retirement, or you can't put it into savings.
And, or any debt.
Um, it doesn't all have to be spent by December two thousand twenty-four, but it has to be committed by then to something.
Now, you talked about possibly using or working with the ball field over here for snowmobiles?
Well, I just made a suggestion, you know, if, if this is gonna fill up, we've got this huge ball field and it's not used in the winter, why couldn't we plow that parking lot and have them park over there?
Well, the other thing is, it's like Alan was saying, if it, the portion, if you look at the ball fields to the right and if you look to the left where you can park more vehicles, that's basically not a field unless you bring in more fill.
No, I didn't mean develop it differently and then just use the existing parking lot as a basketball this stuff over there. I mean, you can't. I don't know.
I could get ten. You can park them like this.
Right.
Someone parks like this, can we suppose to do everything out?
Right. So that is a signage.
Yeah, have a signage that, but now can you use that? Yeah, but I mean, can we use some of the ARPA money through the signage in this roadway and here and over there? Yeah, yeah.
Now, we can just put up no parking signs though, you have to have an ordinance.
Right.
I mean, and you can put them up, but you can't find anybody.
But I mean, if you had one here, just say for town office usage, and then over there is for what do you wanna call it? Single, single vehicle parking and then
There is a problem there for snow.
Fast trail access over here.
Because they can get right on there by the garage, um, how, is there, um?
And it wouldn't work in the summer, if they might use four winters on it?
No, they can't.
You can't use four winters on it.
No, no. No, but motorized vehicles other than home machines.
Kind of where you're good for all the bicycles that will walk, isn't it?
Yeah, but I mean, they're still being able to come here though, because that's a single vehicle. Or trailer. Yeah, well, I think we look into the, the leash lane over here, see if which pile over there for the winter, yeah. I need some answers on that. But signage could be, could happen on my boat. Because you really won't want to be parking along this school street.
No, the neighbors will call their arms.
Well, it'd make it real heavy.
Well, and, um, my envision, envisioning is someday having a continuation of, uh, walking path, um, so it's really gonna slow down, there's no room for them to park on that road. You know, we could even use the money to, uh, do a study of parking around here of some sort and figure it all out, I don't know. But for the time being, that's the only thing I could think of. You don't have anyone else on? Linda, you have any comments about the use of ARPA funds?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself, um. No, I, I thought you would get a lot of people come out, because you know, a lot of people have, um, comments about it, but, um, I, I must be, they think you guys are doing a great job, which you are, um, coming up with ideas of what to do with it. Now, you said something about, um, you can't use it to pay down debt, but can you do it to take on new projects?
Yeah, we can buy something, so if we had bought the excavator outright, we could have. But now that we have a commitment or lease, it's like, um, paying down debt.
So you can't save it for the future to buy equipment unless you specify what it's for?
No.
Okay. But can you use it like maybe for the old school building?
Yeah, we could use some of it for the old school building and, um, once we hear any kind of report.
Okay, so I know in the past you, you've applied or the school committee has applied for grants. So then you could maybe, if you had to by the end of two thousand and twenty-four and the project hadn't really gone anywhere, you could set aside a match to a grant and that would be okay? Earmark it for that?
We can set it aside, we have to commit to something or actually spend it.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's.
We're committed to, um, we're committed to four thousand dollars to scan surveys, that's a commitment we have.
Right.
We probably would need a contract to that effect in our records, but that's a commitment.
Okay, all right, so in other words, that's why you wanted people to come out, so you guys could get ideas of what to earmark it for, so in the future, uh, the date when it has to all be earmarked for, you know where it's going.
Well, I would like to know what, um, citizens, um, what their thoughts are, I have this old, uh, we did that survey quite a while ago, um, but there were like only fifty-one responses, uh, to it. And that's not a, a good showing of what townspeople have any interest in. Maybe they have different interests moving forward than the select board does, I wanted to hear.
So, I'd like to make a suggestion, because you know, we have town meeting coming up, and I know we'll have it from the floor for some of it, but then the rest of the people will be coming in for the rest of the day to vote on the officers and also for the school. Could you guys maybe come up with a survey we could hand out to them on their way out after voting and, and have a box to put the, have them put it in, and just have it specifically for what they wanna see for ARPA funds?
Yeah, we could do that. Yep.
And maybe just limit your, to a certain number, and then they, a couple of lines where they could put what they thought, if it wasn't on there as one of their priorities.
Right, we could do that.
Well, I would prefer not to even, uh, say what unlike them, you have to think totally what it is, I don't wanna influence them.
Okay, so not a multiple choice.
Make it easy by checking the box, it's just one question, where would you like to see our, the balance of ARPA fund spend?
Okay, that would be good.
Okay, um. Any other comments on this? Portion of the, uh, I don't come on to, um, which are in the background licenses. So it's a new form, it's the, the Woke store is asking for, uh, approval from the select board or for class two license, it's a whole new application, it doesn't say anything on it other than their name. So I don't, uh, you know, it's really kind of dangerous.
So, what it is now is everything is through a portal, so they filled out the whole form, and then what they wanted the town clerks to do is just approve it or disprove it. But our, we're set up the old way where the select board still approves it. You guys don't have to sign the sheet, but in your minutes, you have to put if you approve it or not. It's based on a renewal license, so it's the same as last year.
Yeah, the license applied by ARPA requires the approval of local commissioners prior to consideration by D L C, we are the local commissioners. So we just need to, uh, have a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'm ready, I'm ready to approve the liquor license for the waters.
In a second?
I'll second.
First and second, do we have any comments? If not, all those with a favor.
Right.
Opposed, so carried. Certificate of appeal or suit pending. Now, it's signed most of them. So we have no suits.
Yeah, is there, was there anything further that needs to be done on that, or?
No, I mean, I was gonna change the date, because we can't do it until the first Tuesday, I'm gonna do it. It's, um. No, it's just something that the board needs to do, it's the last piece of the grand list that was filed for two thousand twenty-two. Just, um, saying that no one is, um, lodging any suit against us, um, the listeners, um, for taxes. Town meeting discussion?
So I've reached out to Justice for Dogs, and Amy is supposed to get back to me by this Friday, but she's pretty sure that they will want to do the food, because we don't know how long it's going to, we're going to be there, because it's gonna, kind of be a short meeting. Um, they're going to do breakfast things and coffee and, you know, they will have some soda and stuff, and they might do some hot dogs. Um, but, uh, that is what we're aiming for.
Okay, um. What about, um, so you've talked to the school? They're all still with us?
Yep, there's no protocols, other than if you're sick, you can't come into the building. Um, but, um, and if you wanna wear a mask, they're more than happy, uh, some people are still wearing masks there. Um, they do ask that, you know, we kind of not wander around into the, you know, the hallway, both hallways or whatever, so we contain ourselves in, you know, our voting area. Um, and that was about it, and they just asked, um, uh, they wanted to talk to me and Dolan about.
I can't hear, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, they wanna talk to Dolan and I about, um, setting up for the recording. So I told Dolan that I go up Monday before and set everything up, and, um, maybe he can be there with me.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll get back to you about that, Linda.
Okay.
Are the girls got sewing hookies?
Yes, and they wanted to know if, um, they can be in the gym, or do they have to do it in the lobby?
It depends on whether they're required or not.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Probably the lobby would be better, but I understand that the school's doing something in the lobby?
Well, they're just going to emphasize their, um, special eagle thing they have, you know, they're gonna hand out like they did kind of at our barbecue, telling us about Woke at school and what they're doing and stuff like that. They're gonna feature themselves.
Uh, what are they gonna do then, it's like when people walk into the meeting, or?
No, 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 right there, um, in the lobby by the, um, uh.
Yeah, are they getting people as they're walking in?
Well, there just be, will be a table with kids at it, saying welcome to Woke at school and stuff.
Okay.
And I haven't talked to Jim to see if he wants to do a table for the fire department, sometimes they want to.
Well, we're thinking of asking, of seeing if like, um, the forest or anybody else at school, if anyone else wanted to do, um, it would have to be in that little corner there where you by the kitchen, not by the beach is the other one.
Way over in the corner near the door.
What about, um, uh, do we wanna do a pledge allegiance?
Well, that I didn't know, because I don't know if there's boy scouts here anymore.
Well, there's girl scouts.
That's true, I, I could reach out to, uh, Krista and Danny and see.
But I wanna see, is that something that's, so the board wants to have done?
I think so, yeah, yes.
Yeah, because we bring up that flag in the corner over there, so.
Girl scouts would be great.
Okay, I'll reach out to them.
How late are they here on Mondays?
Hmm, five-thirty usually.
What else are we forgetting, other than next meeting, we'd like to have Joe ten. Wants to reach out to him. He can attend by Zoom.
Okay, I, I can reach out to him, he's been emailing me about doing a writing campaign and everything, so I'll just let him know.
Yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to go over town meeting. Yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to go over town meeting stuff with him before, not during.
Okay, and I'll send him an agenda.
Okay. You should probably let him know sooner and then tell him you'll send an agenda.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
The fifteen. And and he's welcome to attend on his own.
Okay.
Great, is that it? Are you gonna need someone to help you take all that stuff up on Monday?
Well, Diane Earl is gonna help me, uh, Edie's gonna stay in the office while I go up there and set up and Diane's gonna help me. So I've kind of hired her to help me if that's okay.
Um, she's gonna love stuff, you mean?
Yeah, we're just gonna put stuff in the car and everything and I I've moved the um, voting booths before, so that's not a big deal.
Okay. Well, if you need help, let us know.
Okay, she has a Jeep, so she said we could put some stuff in the back of her car.
Alright. Any other questions for Melinda?
How are you feeling?
A little under the weather, but I'm doing better now, I rested pretty much all afternoon, so I'm doing better, I can't wait to go back to work, this is pretty boring. But the one thing I will ask guys is um, town meeting night, uh, because we are not using the tabulator. I am going to ask the select board to please come and help us count.
Good.
Yeah.
I mean, the school one will be easy because it's a yes and a no and they've created their own ballots. Um, but ours is gonna be a little. More, I mean, we don't have any competing for any races, but we might get some walk uh, brightens which will take time. And I'll have a whole new, well, not a whole new BCA, but I'll have three new BCA members, so. I'm hoping to meet with them beforehand and go over a little bit of it.
Okay, thank you. Last things, I'm just gonna bring up quickly updates, um. Estill property, I've talked, did I tell you last meeting I talked to Jim Ryan about himself, did I?
I fully talked to him, but I don't know if he told you.
Um, I did talk to Jim Ryan for quite a while, he's kind of interested in it, but um. Just concerned about the cost and what additional costs it would be. Um, but I have reached out to Fish and Wildlife. I didn't talk to the person I wanted to will, but I talked to his office today. Um. He kind of seemed pretty interested in that. Property, so I just wanted to let you know that.
That's good.
The conversation is at least going forward. But to me, I think that would be the best outcome, if they took it over.
Sure would, yeah, I think it's ideal.
Cuz all the other, you know. Jim Ryan, cuz Jim would have to get, and we did a boundary line adjustment, I didn't talk to the Reeves yet. But they split it and they'd need a survey, deeds plus paying for that. And they're just not really all that, it's not really good lynch for them to do anything.
Now their objective is to protect it.
Right.
At their own expense and so. Fish and Wildlife is.
Yeah.
Just perfect, you know.
So I kind of just sold the guy, you know, it's like, there's a lot of birders go in there.
Butterflies are great.
Just to entice them into, so.
All just dream.
Yeah. The other thing is I just want to update you on that accessory. Thing. That I've been working on, Johnson and High Park forever. Um. So I put out an ad in January. And no one. Applied, we've been. Being in the bushes, talking to different towns, trying to get other uh, towns to. Come on board or commit some hours so we could bring it up from. Uh, twenty hours to a. To more reasonable, like thirty two, so they, someone might. You know, have more full-time position between all of us and get some benefits. But that has not happened either, or because we're too slow, I mean, towns have come on that needed someone, but they weren't. Didn't want to wait until we pulled this together. We uh, have one person that wants to apply. But has no experience. And I basically told them that. For me personally, I didn't think that town of Woke it was interested in training someone. To be an assessor when we already had two qualified assessors now. But then I would need to talk to the board, that was just my. Um. So I did pull out the uh, agreement that was signed by all three interns. I don't know, it, it sounds, so the progress period of disagreement goes from December first two thousand twenty two to September thirtieth. Two thousand twenty four. I didn't really see where. Um, the towns could pull out. Of this, I can see where the planning, we could pull out if we didn't like what the planning commission was doing. But I, but the other two towns know how I feel, um. And they said to come back to the board and they might just do something on their own and not even go through the planning admission. So I want to bring that to you to see how you feel.
My thought is, you know, our, our objective for Woke at Night. Has been to try to uh. Soften the blow there. When inevitable retirements happen, there's some point in time, and that was the idea that would. Uh, be able to have somebody come in who's familiar with the town and also familiar with uh, the office listing. Um, and so we would have. At least the start of a rebuilding, um, and. With the shortage of applicants going through LCPC. Um. I don't think we can call. Doesn't make any sense to me to pay for, you know, training. Uh, from the get-go with two other towns. Um. It does, it 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 puts us back to square one in my mind, is that the problem still exists, that somewhere down the road. Staffing problem um, with listeners and uh. This, at least where this stands right now is not looking like the solution because nobody out there. Um, I don't know how aggressively LCPC's been. Recruiting, um, have they, are they done it?
Lots and um, we kind of told them to stop. Um, not to do it again. Because uh, we're trying to tweak it. The um, ad to make it a little more um. Appealing for someone, now this woman from the state, Terri Staves, who has um, two people that are. Qualified and certified, but they want full time, so we've been trying to get. Other towns interested, um, you know, Duxbury, you know. Eden's kind of sitting on the fence waiting for us, um. Greensboro was interested, but then they, they couldn't wait, um, everybody's like now, um.
But have they, has LCPC, have this. Do they feel like they're done with recruiting or?
No, they, they recruit when we tell them. Um.
The thing I am interested in over the weekend, I would run along. You do have, with a training program to be a lister.
Mm-hmm.
But you have to. Basically go through three different sessions.
So you can send me the timeline and so like um, certification one. You take like three classes and um. But then you have to have two years of on the job training before you can go to certification two and um. And I, I didn't look any further than that, but um.
But that's the hardest part.
Yeah, then level two is two years of experience. Um, then you have to complete. Three or four more classes and then in three years' experience. You know, keeps going, so three, six, seven, eight. You know, it's ten years and. Twenty classes. To be an appraiser.
Someone as bad as trying to be a firefighter in state law, it's like. Once we go and right off the bat moves to the fire school and advantage. Which is two years, it's just, it's been five years getting your classes and certification, it's.
Nightmare.
Yeah.
But being a lister, you don't have to be certified.
Right, but I mean, still you would think they would be able to give you. The classes and the training. So within six months, at least you would be with the first level, you would be. Getting hardly any pay and your time and so forth and so on investing. Right, but you know, you know, it is a really expensive program that is a hindrance. But on the other hand, you can be a lister without being certified, you can't be an appraiser, you can be a lister. But we also know that listing is um, there's a lot, lot of complexity in it. Part of experience. That's what I'm saying, it's. I mean, it's just like being a machineist, to get, you gotta put in. Four thousand hours just to get to level one apprentice. Who wants to spend three years. Such a low rate pay, yeah, job, that eventually you may just say, die with it.
So the question before the board is um. Should we pull out of, try to pull out of this um, agreement? Or not, um. Do we have any interest in, they might not hire this, this person would be wonderful. Um, he works for, he's an assistant town clerk, he uh, does real estate, um, research. So he understands a lot of it already, he does another program, so he's smart, um. But that's not the question, the question is, do we want to be part of? His training? And maybe keep him in, you know, maybe. In the future, he. Is our assessor or not, you know. Now, of course, we would not pay him the same. Hourly rate that we had anticipated paying someone. Had more qualifications.
What was the rate the inspector?
I think it was, um. Thirty, I think, I think it's thirty dollars a um.
This person. Say between seventeen and eighteen dollars.
I don't know why they would go.
No, I just said, if that would be agreeable. At least you would have someone that's going to be within hopefully two to three years. Yeah, but they would be, that person would be shared on.
But that's just his cost per hour, then you paying um, benefits, it's. Benefits, um. That all would be billed through the memorial planning commission, we go through his pay, we're not going through the town, so you would. End up paying those benefits and paying um. The planning commission to oversee all of this.
Yeah, I don't, you know, personally, I don't see it working for both of them. Not with this, this applicant.
Yeah.
I mean, we meet every other Wednesday for an hour and pass things out, see what we found out. Think of different ways to approach it, go at it, um. You know, one of the problems is this person um, couldn't get a retirement, even though he works for three towns. Because he would fall under the service agreement, which is only for a short period of time. Um, so then that would be like a contrast, so we were looking at maybe not having a planning commission. Oversee it, you know, we're looking at every avenue of making this, this position more desirable for someone. So I should go back to, um, we're not really interested in this level of an applicant.
That's my view, right? That's pretty good.
And I just needed your um, direction. Okay, I don't have anything else.
What can we do here?
Carry on.